God of heaven, as we come together, we're asking for divine wisdom and assistance in the affairs of mankind, and especially those that are in authority and that have responsibility. We pray for the peace of our city by praying for the peace and the wisdom of those who lead. We ask for your divine enablement and wisdom that is from above, that is peaceable and yieldable and listening to others, and that great community spirit that brings us together. We ask for that kind of peace. We ask for safety for our first responders and our law enforcement, and we ask for help, compassion, assistance to those that are in need. Give grace to the proceedings that are before us, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Try that again. Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
We have listed under item, eight A is going to be continued when we get there to next week. And then item eight E, I'd like to move that up and make that the new eight A. And with that amendment, I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mr. Clerk, any items under five?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No sign-ups for item five.
Okay. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
There were no changes to the consent agenda. I would move that the consent agenda be approved for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylan?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. Item eight E, which is A now in the amended agenda, is a public hearing for H. 2018-0078. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. The first application before you this evening is now Stone Mont subdivision. I apologize, the text there says it's the other project. This is an annexation in backup. This is for a short plat and for a miscellaneous application. The site consists of 7.95 acres of land, Zone CG, located at 3520 East Overland Road. Some history on this. In 1995, the property was annexed with a CG zoning district as part of the development area for the I-84 Center, which consisted of 73.5 acres of land, or also known as Ordinance 719 or Langley Associates Incorporated. A development agreement was required as a provision of annexation to be entered into prior to the preliminary plat being approved and required all the property to develop as a commercial plan development. Initial use permit for a planned commercial development was also approved for a 700,000 plus or minus square foot retail center, but has since expired. The applicant for the previously approved project chose not to proceed with development, therefore, the DA was never executed. However, the provisions of annexation still apply to the development of this property. And I'll touch on that a little bit again. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is mixed-use regional. So for the short plat, the proposed short plat consists of three building lots on 7.95 acres of land in a currently zoned CG zoning district. All the lots in the proposed subdivision comply with the dimensional standards set forth in the UDC. Future building height and setbacks are also required to comply with the aforementioned standards. The applicant is requesting to obtain, and there's a revision from the staff report, that she's asking to obtain three building permits prior to recordation of the plat. Staff has confirmed that the applicant has a single legal parcel to build on, and we have no objection to the one building permit that was originally requested. If council supports additional requests, the applicant is responsible for all the landscape improvements for the entire boundary of the development at the initial building permit approval. The property has street frontage on East Overland Road, which is considered an arterial street, and South Silverstone Way, which is considered a collector. An ingress/egress easement is depicted on the plat for access to all of the proposed lots via South Silverstone Way. Additionally, the property to the west, so back to the aerial, here so you can see where we're talking about. This parcel here, as indicated by my mouse, was required to provide a cross-access to the subject property when it was annexed, as I mentioned earlier. The applicant does not want to reciprocate that cross-access. Specifically, the request is to be exempt from the condition to provide a connection over the Eight Mile Creek. The applicant's argument is that the bridge was originally required in order to provide connectivity from the parcel to the east in order to keep the traffic off of East Overland Road. The applicant feels that now that the parcel to the east has connectivity through the NORCO parcel, that the bridge is no longer necessary. Staff agrees with that, with the applicant, in that adding a bridge over the Eight Mile was good planning in 1995 and again in 2008, when another development agreement was recorded. But with the development of the NORCO site, little would be gained by getting this connection today. Street buffers are required to be provided and depicted on the plat along all streets in a permanent dedicated buffer or common lot maintained by the property owner or Business Owners Association, which include a 35-foot wide landscape buffer along Overland Road and a 20-foot wide buffer adjacent to South Silverstone Way. The master pathways plan calls for a 10-foot wide multi-use pathway along Overland Road. Currently constructed is a 7-foot wide attached sidewalk. Staff is of the opinion that tearing out a relatively new section of attached sidewalk along their frontage of this property in favor of a detached 10-foot wide multi-use pathway will do little in terms of providing, of improving the walkable nature of this corridor and may actually cause more problems than solutions. Staff reviewed the short plat for substantial compliance with the criteria set forth in the UDC and has found that to be in compliance and are recommending approval. Again, back to the miscellaneous applications. So there's a short plat and a miscellaneous. The miscellaneous application is to be exempt from the requirement from the DA in 1995 and 2008 to cross the Eight Mile Creek. Staff is recommending approval of the application, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you. Josh, council, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, it's the applicant here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate you moving me up on the agenda since I've got a double gig tonight. I gotta go to Nampa. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, business address 1029 North Rosario. I'm representing Sundance Investments, Chris and Roger Anderson on this. I've been working in tandem with Cornell Larson, the architect. He's here this evening in the event you have any questions for him. As staff indicated, this parcel's 7.95 acres. We're bringing through a three-lot commercial short plat. So it's kind of a weird thing. 23 years ago, this property was annexed into the city of Meridian in Zone CG. And the way the ordinance amendment was written, it talked about at some point in time there'd be a development agreement, and then it listed all of these sections out of the 1995 ordinance, which it would comply with and would be incorporated into the DA. So in meeting with staff, talking with staff, staff talking with the city attorney, I talked with Sherri Stiles, who was a planning director at the time. It was Mr. Crookston who was writing the DA's kind of in that fashion. And so it kind of creates a problem because those sections of the ordinance do not exist. Now you have obviously design review guidelines and the UDC that we have to comply with. And so we worked with staff. We came up with a solution. Instead of doing, I mean, how can you do a DA mod to a DA that doesn't exist? So this is why we have a miscellaneous application before you accompanying our short plat. It's kind of weird, but that was kind of the best that we all could do. We've reviewed the staff report. We did submit a site plan. Cornell has a site plan. There's Blue Bird Car Wash that wants to go on the property. The public street has been, uh-oh, did I mess it up, Josh, by touching this?
There you go.
South Silverstone Way was constructed with NORCO. So this is a commercial collector roadway. It bridges Five Mile Creek, goes up to the NORCO site. And so the first lot is proposed to be a car wash. We show this as retail, and then I think Cornell has this as an office lot. We are in agreement with staff that with the first building permit, we will install the 35-foot of landscaping adjacent to Overland Road. When Silverstone Way was constructed, they constructed the roadway improvements, and in addition to that, 10 feet of landscaping has been installed. So in my response to the staff report, I indicated that we will basically supplement the 10 feet of landscaping. And so it would be redundant for us to then allocate 20 feet when there's already 10 there. So we'll supplement that, so you'll get the 20 feet that is required by the UDC. Also, we had asked in our initial application to be allowed to have three building permits prior to submitting or recording of the final plat, excuse me. And I did so because I was at multiple hearings where Brighton Corporation came through with a short plat, and they'd asked prior to recording the final plat, we would like, we respectfully request that we be able to obtain commercial building permits. So in staff's condition, they, number eight, they said the applicant is eligible for one building permit prior to recording of the final plat. We respectfully would ask for three. If it's the council's, obviously, their determination that we get one, then so be it. But we have asked for three. Under site-specific number two B and three A, we would ask that depict 10 additional feet to match the 10 existing feet of landscaping along South Silverstone Way for a combined 20 feet. So we will augment that landscaping. And then on the cross-access, as Josh indicated, there was some vague language in the S-16 about some cross-access. But since then, obviously, the South Silverstone Way has been installed as a collector roadway, and now there's a new roadway network. And then they will be required to bridge Five Mile Creek, so the interconnectivity will be made through the NORCO site. And so the cross-access here would be redundant. That is Eight Mile Creek. It is a waterway. There is natural habitat. So, you know, we try to protect the creeks. We try to leave them and minimize any crossings, piping, or disruption of those natural waterways because of, obviously, the riparian vegetation and animal habitat. Staff is in agreement with us on that. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, did anyone sign up?
No sign-ups, Madam Mayor.
Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Counsel, any additional information needed?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Quick question, Josh. Just to clarify, the request for the three building permits prior to the recording of the final plat, were there any concerns or is this situation unique enough that that's appropriate?
So only typically when we run into trouble with allowing additional building permits is with residential development because there's lots of setbacks, requirements. The zoning for this is CG, so there are no setback requirements. And so it's really on them to make sure that it doesn't cross the property line, and the risk is on them to do that. So I don't have a whole lot of heartburn about doing that, if that's what you're asking.
It is.
But that's definitely up to council to make that call.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Move that we close the public hearing on item eight E-A?
E-A.
H. 2018-0078. Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Move that we approve H. 2018-0078, inclusive of the request for the three permits prior to recording the final plat. Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
The request excluding the previous requirement to construct the bridges, that's removed.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylan?
There's an additional 10 feet of landscaping as opposed to 20. Just wants to add on to the landscaping.
Yes. Inclusive of that request as well. Sorry. Thank you.
Any further suggestions to the motion? The motion is to approve. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylan?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes from the public hearing. Mr. Neri, do we need a motion to vacate the Fuller Park discussion?
Madam Mayor, we should. Since it was announced on the agenda, we should at least move it to next week.
Okay. Counsel, I will need a motion to continue item eight A on the Fuller Park discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
I move that we continue eight A, Fuller Park Transfer from Western Ada Recreation District Ward to September 4, 2018. And/or, or another, is that the date? Is that a date? Okay? Yeah. September 4, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item eight A on the ward discussion to September 4, 2018. All those...
Madam Mayor, sorry. Before vote, do we know that they're going to be prepared to come back by that time? We have the option to vacate, and they could request to come back at a time that's convenient for them. I would hate to, without a representative ward being here, continue it to a date that we may be in that same position a week later saying, let's continue it to a later point in time. And I didn't, I looked, oh, I do, I didn't see that word member sitting in the back of the room. Not to put him on the spot. And before we take a vote, a quick clarification?
Sure.
The council's...
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
As Colin comes up, kind of the concept was sort of keep the feet to the fire on the conversation. If Ward can't, isn't ready to proceed on the 4th, we table it to a date certain. Trying to push it along was all that I was hoping for.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I honestly, I'm not entirely sure if we'll be ready by September 4th. It's my understanding that there's a lot of discussions between legal departments. And so, you know, I just found out yesterday that it was going to be continued. And so I apologize, I can't provide a whole lot of clarity, but I know that it's something that's going to be discussed a lot. But it sounds like it's a lot at the legal level currently, deciding exactly how it could potentially work.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
Madam Mayor, Colin, what would you prefer? What would be your preference? Vacate or continue?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burnt, I, you know, the ward board hasn't even had a chance to meet since the time, it hasn't been a topic of discussion yet. We haven't had a board meeting since we originally made, we approved the offer. And so it's something that we would need to meet as a board and get, you know, we would need to get our legal counsel to advise us on what our options even are. Because our understanding that it was going to come tonight, and then, you know, like I said, we found out yesterday that there were some issues with the legal part of what the transaction might entail. And so it's something that we would need to discuss at the board level. Yeah, I apologize, I can't give more clarity.
Counsel, certainly, the motion is to continue to September 4th. If it's not ready at that time, we can certainly have a date certain. But as Councilman Borton stated, this, it seemed that there wasn't, I don't know.
Madam Mayor? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Cavner?
I was, well, I would recognize I would get the scorn of Councilmember Borton. I was going to make a substitute motion, but if he's got some comments to make, I'm open to hearing them.
Madam Mayor, the idea to buy a little more time is perhaps, the workshop on the 11th is very light. It might be a more convenient time to let everyone sort things out and then perhaps present then.
I think the original suggestion to vacate, and we can just reset it when the board is ready.
Madam Mayor? Again, you took the words out of my mouth, and I will look to Councilmember Borton for the dirty look when I make a substitute motion, that we vacate this item, item eight A, Fuller Park Transfer from Western Ada Recreation District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to vacate item eight A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. We will bring it back when it's ready.
That was a very dirty look. Kind of a giggling.
Okay. Item eight B is a recommendation from our SWAC chair, Steve Corey. Thank you for joining us.
Steve?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. I am Steve Corey, and I am the chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. I thank you for this opportunity to represent the Solid Waste Advisory Commission to report on our work with relation to the FY19 rate adjustment effort. This presentation should be considered a preview of the solid waste rates report topic that will be before you next week. SWAC, in its considerations, made it clear that transparency is paramount to what they want. SWAC considers these changes, the changes in two parts as they were brought before the commission. First, SWAC will forward to you with a due-pass recommendation, the FY19 solid waste CPI rate adjustment with noted reduction in the household hazardous waste fee. SWAC further recommends a separate column on the rate schedule, itemizing recycling service collection, that would be collection and processing fees. The effect of this change would raise the rate per household by 3.28 percent or a little less than 40 cents per household. The second portion of this year's effort was considered based on a couple of things. First off, we are still dealing with and understanding that Meridian citizens support recycling. Unfortunately, that is a piece of information that comes from 1999. It's been almost 20 years since we've pinged the public to find out what their position was. The commission strongly recommends a surveying process or recommend some kind of advisory vote or something to go ahead and get a current feeling for what the citizens are considering. Taking our current understanding, which is that the public supports recycling and the information that was provided to us, requiring an out-of-contract recycling processing fee of 78 cents per household and 71 cents per cubic yard for commercial, SWAC concluded that they will forward to city council for your consideration with a due-pass recommendation those fee increases to allow for recycling services to continue as they currently are being provided to the citizens. There are furthermore on that, we have that just limited to one year. That is to say that every year, the amount that is needed to cover processing would have to be reviewed. And that it was our recommendation that that not be subject to consumer price index increases. And this was dependent on a determination, well, this had that concurrent recommendation of a determination of the citizens' views on recycling. SWAC recommended that the franchise fee not be applied to the recycling processing fees. However, since last Wednesday, finance has determined that the computer system that we have would not be able to go ahead and discern between portions of this. And the franchise fee will have to be applied to the numbers, the costs that I've mentioned here. In my opinion, if SWAC had been presented with the limitations of the financed deal, they would have naturally agreed with staff's recommendation. So let me highlight that, well, I mean, that in addition to the need for the addendum to the current contract, this adjustment to the rate fees is large enough to require a public hearing. SWAC recommends the contract amendments be dovetailed with the public hearing so that if they are determined to be acceptable, they would be able to be implemented concurrently with the previously mentioned annual rate adjustment. That way, the citizens only have one adjustment per year, which we think is something that they appreciate. Now, having said that, then it appears that SWAC, the city staff, and Republic Services are in agreement with these numbers for the potential FY19 changes, and we believe they are ready for your consideration. So just once again, of course, that would kind of cause things to be a little bit tight. There would need to be on September, next week, September 4th, Republic Services will present its FY19 solid waste rate adjustment report. And both myself and city staff will be here if there are any questions for us. If directed by council to move forward to a public hearing, the court will publish, and that will allow for two consecutive weeks, the proposed, to advertise the proposed adjustment and the new fees. And then a public hearing would have to be on September 25th, and that would allow us to be able to implement these on October 1st. And that's my report.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavner?
Just maybe the request for Steve or for staff. I know that that report will land in our packet on Friday. If that's delivered to staff beforehand, if we could get that earlier rather than on Friday, if possible, I'd really appreciate the opportunity to look at it as soon as possible.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylan?
Steve, I know this has been a grueling process, and even though you haven't, you know, SWAC hasn't specifically maybe reached out and asked about recycling. I know that on Monday, before, just a few hours, over 1,000 people signed up for the orange bag. So I think that shows that people in Meridian do support recycling. So thank you for your report today and next week.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Comments on the recommendation? Madam Mayor? Well, Mr. Neri, maybe you can outline the process moving forward.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I think that the next step, what we anticipate to have in front of you next week, is an addendum to the current working agreement, operating agreement with Republic to add this additional component of the recycling cost. Because right now, currently, the only component is the collection cost of recycling, not the processing. So that's what the addendum is about. And then the, there, I think all of the specifics of the rate increases was going to be brought forward by both the city, SWAC, and finance so that we could be in the process of noticing the increases because we've got increases based on the CPI as well as increases based on the processing fee changes. So we want to make sure those keep going forward. So we need approval ultimately of the contract amendment as well as then the fee hearing for the new fees in relation to both the trash collection as well as recycling. Did I miss anything, Steve?
Next week.
Dave, did you have some information to add as well?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If it pleases the council, I thought we'd take just a few minutes just to touch on solid waste in general. We know through the energy bag and through this process as staff, we know through the composting conversations that have occurred in glass recycling that has just been heard by council recently. There's a lot going on with solid waste. One of the things that we've noticed over the last several months is the ability of staff to manage all the things going on with solid waste. We want to have the conversation with council that we've had with leadership and with mayor's office as well about what exactly are the roles and responsibilities going on and how can we most effectively manage those roles. We're finding difficulty managing by committee. And so what we'd like to do over the next three to five weeks is find a time to come back to you and discuss roles and responsibilities related to solid waste and how we can more effectively manage those. And primarily, those fall into two things that we see right now. One, revising the way that we handle the roles and responsibilities that relates to the solid waste commission as well as what staff does and what's the interrelation between those two. And also bring back a recommendation about additional staffing requests to the council for discussion based on the information that we can provide at that time. So we just wanted to share that with council. If there's any direction or feedback that you'd like to offer us, that's fine. But we'd also like to just bring that back to you as a single point of contact and a single discussion rather than tie it into the rest of this discussion.
So it'd be separate from costs?
Correct. Separate from the CPI.
And the request from, yeah, SWAC or, and SS. Boy, that was yesterday, huh? Republic. Any questions for Dave?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. So we do need a motion?
You do not need a motion, Madam Mayor, because you will have it on your agenda.
To bring the information back next week. So you will have on your agenda next week a full recommendation from SWAC and Republic will be on hand as well.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Along that same topic, there's been discussion amongst us and I think, and Steve brought it up, the opportunity to reach out again to the community, gauge some interest through surveys or whatnot on appetite for recycling opportunities, their interest in what we should promote more or less. And hopefully that stays in some part of the conversation so we don't miss that. It seems to be a great recommendation. You know, Councilman Cavanagh's brought it up that perhaps we could do that. Need to make sure we don't lose sight of that.
I believe that is why the one-year evaluation was really there to gauge what the interest of our community is and bring that back when they have some time to do it right. And certainly you'll be engaged in those conversations as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh.
Along that note, I'd like to have somebody or maybe a memo to council to update us on that progress. So first I'm hearing of that this evening is that's the direction. So again, I know there's a request to come back in four or five weeks from council. Should this body want to put forth a question on the November ballot related to recycling, that would be past that window. So, while I appreciate the opportunity to have staff before us, time is of the essence on this. So if we could expedite some form of communication to council and perhaps an opportunity for us as a body to decide if that's something we would want to do, recommendations from staff to have that happen sooner rather than in five weeks would be preferred.
So I think Mr. Burton was talking about a survey and citizen initiative to be on a ballot. I didn't take that was what you were talking about.
Madam Mayor, it sounds like he's inviting that question for this body to decide if in or out. If that's his recommendation, then we should need to give some direction, I think, to that. At the very least, gather some information. If it's a survey, that's less formal, perhaps. I'm not so sure what the mechanics of either of these processes would be, but defer to Councilman Cavanagh if that's the request to get direction from us on ballot initiative, ballot measure versus information gathering survey. And Madam Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Borton, I appreciate you asking and it's always a challenging subject when we have an agenda item and we don't necessarily have a whole lot of context and information. Conversation occurs. Love hearing that these are things that SWAC is looking into as well. I've been saying for, boy, it feels like 10 months now that recycling is changing in Meridian and I think that a lot of our citizens have a lot of different opinions and perspectives on it, especially when it relates to an increase in cost. And so to Councilmember Mylum's point, we saw incredible support and excitement for the Orange Bag program in the past 24 hours. But I think asking our citizens the question, do you support changes to recycling X, program X, if it involves increasing your rates by Y amount, do you support that? I think that's a good question to ask them. To Commissioner Corey's point, we haven't really, you know, pegged our citizens' feedback on recycling in a formal capacity in over 20 years. I've made my feelings known about this to the mayor and other council members that I think that this is the right direction for us to go. I was not prepared to lay out any mechanics on that this evening. But, you know, we talk about a lot of these items and then sometimes they fall off the plate or by the wayside. And so when I hear a longtime commissioner who's done a lot of great work for our community say this is something that they're doing and I know that we as council have talked about this is something we want to be doing, I hate that we're saying, let's delay it a year when we've got some of the smartest minds in the valley in this building and we can come up with the appropriate question to ask our citizens. And I'm happy to volunteer for that process. I try really hard to stay out of staff's way. If that's something that the mayor is supportive of and staff want to do, yeah, let's put something together. Let's do it quick and put it before us to discuss and put it out before the voters. We had in, what, in October of last year, the mayor's office presented a whole host of options about ways that we can engage the public. And one that was suggested and recommended by them was a citizen vote. The time, there weren't any issues that were recommended that we as a body felt comfortable with. But I remember the same comment, I think from, I think from Councilwoman Little Roberts was, we don't want to close the door on this. If they're, if the staff or if we as a body have other ideas, let's keep the door open. To me, this seems to make sense. If I'm alone on that, that's okay. We can move on. But if the question's asked, what do we want to do? I think this is a great opportunity to ask our citizens.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I love the idea of getting some feedback. Recycling has changed so much and every time we blink, it seems like it is changing even more. And I really like the idea of going out to the vote, but I also like the idea of a survey because I think we can get more flexibility because with a survey, you can give them some opportunities. I'm willing to pay up to $1.50. I'm willing to pay up to $5. They can write their own amount in and I don't know if we can do that with a vote. I would just like to see us have as much flexibility to get as much information as possible if we're going to reach out to our citizens.
I think that the conversation that SWAC has been having is just what is the processing? There's been so much change in the processing of what we are currently doing. This doesn't consider any change from what Steve presented tonight. It's just that additional cost to process what we're currently accepting. The survey would be what is the desire of the community over and above that? Or do you want to recycle at all, I guess, could be a question. I'm not sure in a ballot initiative or a question to the citizens, as Ms. Little Roberts pointed out, how you can narrow it to one thing other than do you want to recycle or not, yes or no. So I guess we would need further conversation about what exactly we would be asking our citizens or wanting to ask our citizens. Because the fee that was discussed tonight is really about processing what we currently do.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I brought it up and I'm not trying to make a, turn us sideways, but we could probably move on in the agenda and have the conversation about what the scope of, everyone wants to gather information from the public. It's just the proper mechanism to do that. Survey is, as Councilwoman Little Roberts has brought up, affords us some flexibility, but I don't know, we have to invent that right now. The ballot measures another means to gather that information. But it'll probably come back on the agenda, but let's talk about what type of data we'd want to gather. And I'm not so sure, I'm not convinced a ballot measure is appropriate, especially under the time crunch because the flexibility's important. But nonetheless, I don't think we have to do that right now. It's not on the agenda necessarily as a noticed item, so we don't want to get too far afield. So it's my fault for bringing it up. I just wanted to make sure we continue to talk about it and make a decision. So.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I think if, I don't know. I mean, I think we had the conversation and it seemed like we asked for the information to, okay, can this happen? If so, how quickly do we need to have a question figured out? And we figure out a question and decide whether to move forward with throwing it on there or not. That was a week or two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Now we're here and it gets brought up again. And now if we move on again, I mean, it's not going to happen. Ideas die a lot before we ever actually move on them just because not enough people are banging down the door to say, let's move forward on this idea. So I think we need to figure out when we're going to have an opportunity to know exactly what that would take to do it and then decide, okay, we are interested in doing this. Let's get a group of people together and put a question together and decide if we want to put it on. As I was pointing out, time is of the essence.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as a point of reference, if a ballot initiative or question was the decision of the council, we would have to have that language to the county clerk's office no later than September 7th. So that is the timeframe that we are working on in terms of getting language put together.
And I believe that date was stated, although I thought it was the 17th.
Madam Mayor, I didn't think there was a decision that we were doing a ballot measure by any stretch. I think the decision was let's gather information. That's one means to do it. So if anyone up here has language that they would think would be appropriate to gather that, I don't think it can get done. I don't, I'm necessarily supportive of it, but that doesn't mean that the outreach effort dies.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I have to agree with Councilmember Borton. I think that even if there was one or even many of us that wanted to work on this, we would need to partner with staff and SWAC on all of that. It just, I think it's a missed opportunity that, something that we could have done. And perhaps there's an opportunity for us to discuss it, to do it at a later point in time. I think the questions related to recycling are going to continue to come before us and we as a body need to make a decision about what is best for our community.
Well, this will be on the agenda next week and we'll have further conversation. Anything further on item B?
Madam Mayor, just a real quick response.
Ms. Mylum.
So what we will be hearing next week will, it should stabilize things for at least a year. So that gives us some time to then figure out if there are any changes that we want to make. It will be in a contract. And it also is, though it is a little bit more per month, it is a lot less than all of our neighbors are paying. So, you know, between the staff and the SWAC negotiations, we really did get it down to the bare bones.
Thank you. And thank you for the continued work. This has been a yeoman's job. So, thank you. Item 8C. Mr. Nary, do you want to start us with discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, what you have in front of you tonight is a request for reconsideration of a decision of the city council in regards to Entrata Farms, which was H2018-0032 by James Doolin and Fig Village at Parkside, NLC. There was an original request that was filed by council for Mr. Doolin and Fig Village and then a supplemental request for reconsideration that was also filed by council. Pursuant to the city code, city code references state code. There's two state codes that are in play here, but the city code requires that you identify a specific deficiency in the council's decision. Then the council can consider that. The council can either agree with the decision or agree with the request for reconsideration and reverse the decision that was made, the council, and then set it for a new hearing. And that's all we do tonight if that's your direction. You can affirm the decision that was previously made in this denial or you can modify the decision that was made and give direction what that is. We would then provide a written answer to that. There's no testimony to be taken tonight by any of the parties. What has been identified by the applicant as a deficiency is that in the section of Idaho Code 67-6535, it does require specific findings in regards to land use decisions. There's a different code in play and I'm doing this mostly for the record. I know that everybody's super engaged with this, but the Idaho Code Section Title 50-222 also has language specifically in regards to annexations. And so what the council did in this Entrata Farms is they denied an annexation request. And with that, the council had a great deal of discussion on the basis for that denial, included a lot of language in regards to serviceability, safety services that were available in the area, the ownerships of the units and the property, the, pardon me, sir? Oh, I'm sorry. So there was a lot of discussion and ultimately the council determined that it was not in the best interests of the city at this time based on all of those concerns that were expressed to annex this property. The findings document then reflected, as most of our findings documents on annexations reflected, that was not in the best interest of the city. The applicant has disputed that and said that the findings are not specific enough and that the applicant is therefore entitled to a new hearing. It's the opinion of our office that it is sufficient if the council desired, the way it's currently crafted and does comply with Idaho Code, but if the council would like more specificity and have those specific reasons that were already in the record and stated as your basis for denial, the council can direct that as well. Or ultimately, if the council wishes, you can reverse your decision and set it for a brand-new hearing. So those are the decision points in front of you tonight. Again, there's no other testimony that's allowed under the code, our code or the state code in this. It really is based on what is in front of you in writing.
Okay, council hearing the different points laid out. Any questions for Mr. Nary or any comments? Mr. Burton.
Just for a point of clarification, if we choose to allow more testimony, is that something under purview or is it, is that not allowed?
So, you mean for tonight's purpose, sir? So, okay, madam members, Councilmember Burton, no, you cannot accept more testimony or ordinance is very specific that no other testimony is allowed. It's based on the written findings or the written request that's in front of you.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Comment and then maybe a motion. I unfortunately was absent from this particular meeting and it's always a concern when you miss a meeting that, oh, man, something might not go the way that I had hoped that it would go. And being very candid after reading the minutes and watching the meeting, I'd wish that I had been here because I was one and am still very much in support of this project. The challenge is, is what I like and what I want and the reason why we have councils and not dictatorships is the law is pretty clear. And I have to agree with legal counsel's recommendation that after, you know, reading the minutes and watching the multiple times, I think that the group that voted to deny this product was fairly clear in their findings as to the reason why. And that's why I'm happy to be the bad guy on this tonight, unfortunately. So none of the rest of you guys need to worry about that. I appreciate the context and the comments and the written submissions, but I agree with legal counsel and I would move that we would deny the reconsideration request for
for item 8C-H-2018-0032.
Second. I have a motion and a second to deny the request for reconsideration. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, a question for Mr. Nary. Is there a mechanism to, would it take somebody who was on the prevailing vote? Would they be able to say, hey, we want to rehear the whole thing? Or is there any way to do that, or is the only way for us to hear the project again, either to say we had a deficiency, or for the application to be filed again?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, yeah, the time has passed for reconsideration of the original vote, so all you have is what you can consider under this ordinance and the state code. So it is either making a determination that there was an error and a new hearing would be required, or the applicant would have to, based on the motion that's been made and seconded, the applicant would then have to either repeal that decision, which, there's a question about that, whether they can, or reapply.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I guess I'm with counsel and Cavanagh. I was dumbfounded through the meeting. I didn't understand. I mean, if it's appropriate to me, just talk here. I, it seemed like we were just spinning our wheels trying to find a reason to deny it.
Not rehearing it. This really should be limited to the request in front of us.
I hope you bring it back, but here we are.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 8D is a public hearing on H-2018-0061. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, before you this evening is an application for annexation and zoning. The project is called 75, excuse me, 750 East Eustick. It's actually also the address, 750 and 772 East Eustick Road. Site consists of approximately 1.65 acres of land, currently zoned RUT. Record of survey, number 9145, was recorded on March 6, 2012, for the subject property, which depicts two parcels, parcel one and parcel two. Ada County does not have any documentation of an approved split resulting in this configuration, but for the property is deemed to be one parcel, and only eligible for one building permit. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is low-density residential. The applicant has applied for annexation and zoning of their 1.65 acres of land with the agreement for extension of domestic water and sewer services outside Meridian city limits, recorded as instrument number 2018-047087 on May 23 of this year. Requested zoning district is R2, consisted with the property's future land use map designation of low-density residential. The narrative from the applicant indicated that the applicant's well on the property ran dry earlier this year. The city agreed to extend city water and sewer services to the property with the stipulation that the applicant submit a request for annexation into the city within 10 business days of approval of that agreement. The property was connected to the water and sewer services in May. No new development is proposed with this application. With the recent widening of East Eustick Road, the existing home does not comply with the front setback requirements of the R2 zoning district. As such, it's, the building is deemed a non-conforming structure and is subject to the standards listed in the UDC for non-conforming structures. Direct access to the subject property is provided from Eustick Road. Be a circle driveway across both properties. If the property redevelops in the future, access is required to comply with the standards of the UDC listed as access to streets. Although the record of survey depicts two parcels, only one legal parcel does in fact exist, therefore, the property of 772 East Eustick Road is not eligible for a building permit at this time. The property would need to be subdivided in order to be eligible for an additional building permit. With that, commission did recommend approval. The summary of the commission public hearing was Rick Rowe, the applicant's representative, was in favor. There were no comments in opposition, nor additional comments were received, nor written testimony. I was the staff member presenting the application. There were no key issues of public testimony, no issues for discussion from the commission, no commission changes, and no outstanding issues for city council, and have not received any written testimony since the planning and zoning commission hearing. Commission did recommend approval, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions? Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Rick Rowe, 4482 North Price Avenue, Meridian.
Thank you.
She agrees with your staff recommendations and just requests approval.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
I move that we close the public hearing for...
Can I just first ask if there's any further testimony?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I guess there's no questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Clerk, anyone sign up?
There were no signups, Madam Mayor.
Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Bird? You sure? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Burt.
Yes, ma'am. I move that we close the public hearing for item H-2018-0061.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
I move that we approve item number H-2018-0061.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 8D. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. We're at item number nine, Department of Reports, 9A is our economic development update. Good evening. This is earlier than usual, so...
I know, this is wonderful.
You hit the right night.
All right. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come here and share an annual update with you. Just a few of the things that I'm going to cover tonight. We'll talk a little bit about the market, jobs, and a lot of the stats from the previous year. Some of our successes, our marketing, our industry analysis that I didn't get to cover during our budget hearings, which I appreciate, but still want to cover it with you. And then, of course, our strategic plan, a little piece of it, where I'm not going to steal any thunder from the mayor this evening.
Oh, you can still.
But I'm going to talk about what I need to kind of finish that strategic plan, and we are actually getting to that point. So we'll step off with, of course, our job creation and market. We had 2,877 new jobs in 2017. That is a little bit down from the year before, but based on the past eight years, with an average of about 1,500, still pretty darn good. We had over 75 new businesses that came through planning. And then, of course, something that I always love to see are our top five industry job growth in the market. And of course, healthcare and social assistance came in first, so that's always exciting to me, especially with ICOM now up and running. I think we're going to see a lot more. Accommodation and food services, obviously, in an area we do very well in. Professional technical, glad to see that one. And I have to tell you that these numbers came in before pay loss city, so I'm hoping next year this one will move up a little bit. And then, of course, retail, and our good old finance and insurance. We're at 2.6% unemployment, which is fabulous, but when it comes to business attraction, sometimes that can be a little bit of a hindrance for us. A little bit about the market. Our average income in Meridian is about $40,000. This is why when the TRI was put together, we said that if jobs came in and were eligible, it had to be higher than that average wage. We're still at about $40,000, but I'm hoping we're going to see that kind of bump up, especially with a lot of the jobs coming in at 10 mile. Now, one of the things that I just wanted to point out is that right now, according to a lot of the real estate agencies, we have about 500 new homes on the market, and that's new construction, and the average home value is $352,000. So it's kind of a big jump. Now, if you add in, of course, the older homes, then that drops a bit, but with new construction, 352. Median rent price in Meridian is $1,550. I always like people to keep that in mind, because when they get worried about apartments bringing down property value, that's not happening here in Meridian. Like I said, the average price is 1,550, that's median price, excuse me. And then, of course, a one-bedroom, and I've only experienced this because as the ICOM students came in, we had to try and help. A lot of these ICOM students find housing, and a one-bedroom for a college student was $1,100. So they're pretty, they're getting kind of high. But like I said, when we talk about apartments that people worry about it bringing it down, these are pretty high rents for apartments, so. Our vacancy rates, once again, those are pretty good. But when it comes to attraction, it makes it a little difficult when we don't have that vacancy. Our retail is 6.68, industrial 3.56, and our office is 6.83. And the office is a little high, it's usually a little lower, but because we had a marabin move out to 10 mile, we still have some space over there, but we're working really hard to get that out. Just our stats for the year, 85 one-on-one business assistance meetings, 26 business retention visits, 15 out-of-state site visits. Of those 15, 13 were industrial users, and then the other two were customer service users. We had 23 organizational partner meetings, and then 92 Facebook and op sites marketing posts. A little bit about some of the successes. I had to add that picture of the ICOM students, because actually, I was with Councilmember Ann Little Roberts the day that the students came in, and they were all over Channel 7, and we both got a little teary-eyed about it. They are so excited to be here in Meridian and part of the school, so I think ICOM is all about those students. And September 5th at 5:00 PM is the ribbon cutting, so make sure you get that on your schedule. And then, another one I want to just tell you about is Decal Co-Mania. And I don't know if you've heard about them, but probably almost a year ago, I went over there just to do a business retention visit. I took with me the Department of Commerce, we were just checking in, and it wasn't Decal Co-Mania, it was actually Woodland Manufacturing. And they do signs, they actually were the people that designed the little stick figures in the cars, and I admit, I have one with three dogs. But anyway, so Spence Hill, he owns, or he was the CEO of Woodland, and this was seriously, not even, it was probably nine months ago. And so he said, Brenda, come here, I have to show you something that I designed. And so he rolls out this poster, pulls out his phone, he had a little app that he downloaded, and it's augmented reality, and all of a sudden, this poster just came to life. I have their web address on there, because I want you to go check it out. So then I told the mayor, I said, "Mayor, you've got to come see this." So we went over there, he has, of course, a lot of the Marvel, he has the Marvel comic contract. He had just gotten the, it was the Walmart contract, so you can actually find his posters in Walmart. And when the mayor and I went over there, guess what he got? He also got the contract for Walt Disney. I mean, right here in Meridian, this is huge. So he is growing exponentially, and so we've been working really hard to try and find him some industrial space. And of course, you know, he's in that transition, he's a small business, and now he's got to grow huge. So we're really looking to find something affordable, so we'll keep you posted on that. But we've been working, I check in on him all the time, and I'm like, Spencer, just calling to check on you. So he's used to me calling weekly. Another one I want to talk about is In Time Tech. In Time Tech is one of our technology companies. They do customer service support, a variety of different softwares. They actually just received a grant from the Department of Labor, and also from the Idaho Technology Council, which I am part of the board, and they are actually doing coding classes, not only for their employees, but for other companies in Meridian and throughout the valley. So this is a great opportunity here in Meridian. And I can't tell you yet, I was hoping before I came in front of you that I could announce another one. It has been in your dashboard, so you'll have to go back and look a little bit, but it is one of the companies coming in, they're in the healthcare arena, about 75 new jobs at about $70,000 full-time employees. That's the average, so pretty high pay. So we'll like, hold off till October, they are in the healthcare arena, and they're super excited to be located near ICOM. In 2018, our economic development focus, of course, was a lot of our marketing. We are actually, I was going to print out a copy of our marketing, our new marketing, it has a new look, you'll see it on that kind of sepia-colored one with the M, we love it, it's kind of artsy, and so I was going to print it out, but we just received a two-page piece to put in it from In Time Tech. So I'm going to like, put that in tomorrow, and I will send that to you via the email. So then you'll also hear a little bit more about In Time Tech. So you've seen, of course, our marketing, where it was the targeted industries, that was something that I worked on, of course, with Councilmember Ann Little Roberts in the healthcare arena. But something that you probably didn't see is, we also took a lot of those pieces and turned them into like, little marketing tidbits, so that we would have them for social media. So if there's ever a time that you want us to utilize some of those, this is just one little piece out of probably about 20. So you just let me know, but we'll just show you what we did with that.
I love our parks. I love the Village at Meridian. It is phenomenal, and it really did bring our community to that next level. Boring Springs Water Park, one of the best in the nation. Between that, Big Owls, Jump Time, there's something for everyone.
And so like I said, we have about 20 of those, and we have them from a lot of the doctors that also worked on the ICOM project with us, so just keeping that in mind, we use those for social media. And I just wanted to talk about the marketing, because I think, I don't know if you know this, you should, because you looked at those budgets, but I have $5,000 in marketing, okay? So I need to say a few thank yous, because I kind of leveraged some relationships, primarily because, you know, they've been so involved in sort of our startup weekends and everything else, and they're like, hey, yeah, we can help you with this. So of course, I had worked with Councilmember Ann Little Roberts on our SWITDA grant. That SWITDA grant paid for all of our marketing videos, so that took care of that. Blue Planet Photography, they did a bunch for us, we have a lot of new photographs. I tried to concentrate more on people rather than places, so we have lots of photographs if you need anything for anything. Pepper Shock Media, if you didn't know this, I took a few classes on InDesign, so I'm doing a lot of it in-house, but Pepper Shock worked with me to kind of, you know, change the design and make it a little more exciting. So I can add pieces... you know, change the design and make it a little more exciting. So I can add pieces, we'll talk more about that. And then, of course, Trout Jousters, which they did all the video for us, they were located over in New Ventures Lab. And he just needed to expand, so he bought a building right on Franklin. So, close enough. So while Rick always says, there's not places to find, we found one. So he's still in the neighborhood. So the targeted industry analysis, you know, I was, I was expecting someone to ask a little bit about this during our budget hearings, and you didn't. But I want to say thank you so much, you know, for, you know, going, passing this, because this is really exciting. And I know that council member Luke Cavanagh called me, and he asked me a couple of questions about it, and he's like, calm down, because I get excited about this aspect. We, since I've been here, we've been working off of a lot of 2007, 2008 plans, and we really should do them every five years. What's neat about this is it's also going to be part of the comprehensive plan. So in addition, so what we'll be looking at, you know, I talk about every year I pull those stats, what we'll do is we'll take those stats, the job growth, just some of the trends. And in addition to just looking at that, we'll also look at what are the infrastructure needs for these companies? What kind of transportation do they need? All of this will be combined with the comprehensive plan. So that in and of itself, first time in Meridian, this is pretty exciting stuff. In addition to that, we'll have some marketing plans, we're looking at some areas that, you know, there might be some new targets. And like I said, why is it important? Because every five years, we should be looking at this. We should be looking at that job growth. One of the job growth that we're seeing right now is in wholesale distribution. We haven't thought about that. It's a great opportunity to combine that with the comp plan, because there might be special needs. I don't know about any of you, but I haven't grocery shopped for a couple of years. I click online, and that's going to be the trend. And there may not be those big box stores. It might just be distribution centers. And they're seeing that throughout the US. So that's why it's really important. We'll look at, what are the trends upcoming, we'll forecast, we'll look at, you know, we have Paylocity, that is the foundation of IT. So where would those employees go when they're ready to move up? Rather than them like, leaving, let's find jobs that they'll be able to build their career on. So that's another good, you know, part of this whole study. And then just the timeline, we'll start this in October, and we should actually be done by the first of the year. So it'll move relatively quicker, probably a little quicker than the comprehensive plan, but we'll have a good, good part of it. And then, of course, incentives and economic development policy. We haven't talked to you a lot about this yet, but that is part of my strategic plan. And so an objective two A1, identify and develop and utilize the tools needed for successful attraction and retention of jobs. And part of that is creating incentives to go after our targeted industries. So one of the things that I've been doing is, I've been working with, Ashley, I know, thanks, Mayor, I'm getting tired, and it hasn't even taken that long. I've been working with Ashley, we're looking at some of the destination downtown. I know I've talked with many of you about this in the past. If there is a targeted industry that we want to go after, if it's entertainment, maybe it's a movie theater, maybe it's a performing arts center, let's look at all the incentives. And we do have the tax reimbursement incentive, which is our community match, but, and we have waived some permit fees. But we can also utilize the permit fees for other targeted industries. So we'll come back to you, we're just finishing that up, and we'll come back and talk a little bit more about that. Also, we're just looking at policy in addition to that, qualifications of the company, confidentiality, any conflicts of interest, so that the city will actually have sort of a policy that goes along with that. Now, I had asked CJ, did you, like, to pass out, I wanted to just kind of pass this out, because this is the start of sort of that policy. And I know that everyone had a lot of questions about the tax reimbursement incentive, and when does it come to council? So I went ahead and took the liberty of basically just, you know, writing down just what is, what are the steps? Because as all of you know, if I do not have a pre-app, then chances are, I won't be in to see you. If there is a pre-app that comes in, then we will be in, as soon as I notify the mayor, the two of us will bring this in to review it with each of you. So that way there is not any confusion. So that's part of all of this policy and planning. And throughout all of this, we're also, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but with the comprehensive plan and the targeted industry analysis, Ashley and I are going to revive the ready team that council member Ann Little Roberts also started, she's been a good partner for all these years. So we're going to revive them. We've also brought on additional members, which includes the University of Idaho, Idaho State University, ICOM, and Boise State University. Now, I'm pretty excited about bringing all of them to the table. That's somewhat of a rarity. But they're also, they're going to work with our comprehensive plan, targeted industry analysis, help us with those targets, but also kind of talk to us and, and be sort of our sounding board regarding policy, conflict of interest, all these things. So that'll be coming in the next month. And that, pretty much, is all I have for you today. If you have any questions, I would love to stand for any of those.
Thank you, Brenda. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Uh-oh.
Ms. Love Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Brenda, so excited about all that you've got going on. You have just taken a lot of what we've worked on for years and just continued on. With all that you're looking at doing regarding industries and things, are there any shows or conferences that you're aiming at attending this year? I know we've gone through kind of seasons, where Shot Show was the, the thing, is there anything that's, we did some medical and...
So I think that our targeted industry analysis will really set those goals for next year. We have a little funding left, and the International Economic Development Council does have a conference coming up. But otherwise, I believe as soon as we get done with that industry analysis, those will be our targets. And like I said, I'm going to, I'm using the ready team as, you know, U of I, BSU, they've talked about traveling with. They come with a lot of resources, a lot of data. And so as this data comes in, they'll also be there to help us decipher a lot of it as well. So I'll be excited to share all of those targeted industries with you. Wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Brenda, I don't know, it may be super irrelevant, but as I look down your, your memo here, when I keep seeing it in IDOC, just note that the Idaho Department of Corrections kind of officially claims IDOC. I mean, that's great, if we're going to partner with IDOC, but...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ty Palmer.
That's work for development.
Idaho, I know, and see, we do that, we use those abbreviations or, you know, so that is Idaho Department of Commerce. So we will change that.
Other way.
Don't let him give you a hard time.
Well, I saw that, you know, I said, uh-oh, only because I saw this happen, I thought, uh-oh.
That's all else as well.
Fabulous, thank you.
You're awesome, thank you.
Mr. Burton.
Good job, Brenda. A quick question, who is or would be on the ready team?
Sorry, and there is a whole list of them, I'd, I'd love to actually even send that out to you, but our ready team...
You can do that.
Yeah, we can send it out. But our ready team was basically, we modeled the ready team after we had gone to Chibani, and we talked to their council, to their urban renewal district, and they said, you know what, you have to have this ready team. And they've been standing ready, because we've prepped them. When I've had companies come in, I've called certain people and said, hey, would you mind meeting with this company that's very similar? So what we did is, we kind of gave them all those talking points that were important. So it is comprised of MDC, and that's why I'd asked Ashley to kind of chair it with me. So it's MDC, it is basically, it was the Chamber Executive Board, so many of, you know, the companies in the area. Who else am I missing, Mayor? So the mayor, ourselves, colleges.
Who's on the chair of the Economic Development Committee.
For the Chamber, exactly. So it was just comprised of all the different agencies. Oh, Downtown Business Association, we can't forget them. And then, of course, all the colleges. So there's a nice list.
An architect, a construction manager, a number of different disciplines.
Exactly.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And now I'm caught up, reading through, so I guess my only question is, is this to, to create a policy that doesn't exist, to create a process, or is this to modify an existing one?
It's actually, it's a process that we've had in place, and I'm sorry, Councilman Palmer. It's a, it's a, it's, it's a process that we've had in place, that we've always kind of gone by. It just wasn't formally written out. So I just thought it was an important piece to kind of make sure that you're aware of the steps that go on. As soon as I get that application, so there's a pre-app that comes in, and I have my own pre-app, if it's a company coming to me, I want that pre-app first, before we go anywhere. And the TRI also has a pre-app. So before I come to you, I've always received those pre-apps.
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Great presentation, appreciate the update. These are always valuable to keep us kind of updated as to all the great things that are happening in all of our departments. And then just a compliment, I love the fact that I can call you with a business, large or small, growing or brand new, and you take the time to, to meet with them, provide them feedback and expertise. I just really think it's another example of the Meridian way, and I appreciate it.
Councilmember Cavanagh, thank you very much for that. You know, that's one of the things that I tell everyone, that's my passion. Sometimes, you know, I would, when we opened New Ventures Lab, I mean, that's what inspired me throughout the day, to do our marketing, to do whatever it was. I would go over and just sit and talk with the companies. I mean, Decal Mania, same thing, it's just, that is the inspiration to this position. It's just, and we actually had a walk-in, and you had asked about, because it was on one of our dashboards, but we had a walk-in, and they're doing BitCom. And they were just like, where have you been all of our lives? Because I sat down with them, talked about incentives, we started looking at properties. And it's three people from Seattle, small, you know, and it's going to be a big data center. But they were just like, where have you been? So that's kind of the part that inspires me. Every day, it's a different kind of business. It's exciting.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Really quickly, Brenda, thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
I echo the rest of counsel and say, keep it up, do what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Oh, Councilmember, thank you so much. Any other questions?
Anything further? Thank you, Brenda, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next item under Department Reports is an update on Fire Station Six.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, good evening. I'm going to kick this off, and then Charlie's going to come up to give the update. We have committed to you to come before you monthly to give you updates on Station Six and the progress. I have a couple of things I would like to address before bringing Charlie up. One is, there's a lot of frustration around this project. We understand that. This is the number one priority in our fire department right now, along with the promotional testing and the vacancies that we have. The timelines that I presented to you in July of 2017 were off, as well as the cost. We did our best to research that, we were wrong. And I want to own that, and I want to ask you as counsel, if you have frustrations over that, please direct those frustrations at me. We've got folks working very hard on this project. The last thing I want to do is to have them bear the burden of those frustrations. So certainly, I, I think Charlie's anticipating questions, that's fine, but the frustrations over the project, please direct those at me, so we can address those and own those. The other thing that keeps coming up that I just want to address again, we addressed this before on the record, is why didn't we do the same thing we did with the other five fire stations? I was not here when we did those. So prior to coming to you in July, we looked at how we had built fire stations in the past. I researched that with the documents we had. Those are predominantly led by the rural fire district, and at the time, they used what's called a design-build process, where the design and the build are the same contractor, essentially, if I'm getting that articulated correctly. We did ask early on, before we came to you in July, if that's something the city supports and does, and the answer was no. The city has a process in which we have an architect and we have a CMGC. And so that is why we aren't doing this the same way that we have done every, the other five fire stations. So I hope that clears it up. If there's any questions on that, please ask me. But that, that comment, that question keeps arising. I felt we adequately addressed it, but maybe not, because it keeps coming up. So if there's any questions, that I'm certainly happy to answer those before I bring Charlie up.
Good, that'll turn it over to Charlie.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to give a brief update on Fire Station Number Six. Joining me will be Gunner Gladix from Pivot North Architecture, he is one of our lead architects on this process.
Thanks for joining us, Gunner.
So a little...
Did you ever leave?
What's that?
Did you ever leave?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to bring everybody up to speed where we're at, we completed the programming phase of this design. So within that phase, we wanted to look back and research and identify what the current and future needs of the station on West Overland, where we own the property, what do we need there? What do we need there for today, and what do we need there for tomorrow? So through that identification and that programming, we identified that the current need is a ten thousand four hundred and nine square foot fire station. And the direction to the architect during this process was to design a fire station that is representative of the neighborhood, that is conducive with the neighborhood. That is one thing that we haven't done in our previous fire stations, where in fact, it's that gray cinder block look, and a pretty basic look. So the direction to the architects, let's have it representative of the neighborhood, and let's look at what we need today, but also looking towards the future. So the station was designed for future expansion when that need arises. This, again, is another departure from our current fire stations. We cannot add to our current fire stations. If the level of service increases in the particular areas where those current fire stations are, we don't have the ability to add on. So this was part of this programming phase and working diligently with our designers to identify these needs. And they did a very good job on that identification, realizing what we need today, but also in ten years, in fifteen years, in twenty years, when the increases, especially in this particular location where we see a lot more buildings of multiple stories, a lot more commercial building, close access to the interstate, which we know is going to increase our call volume of bad wrecks in the future years to come, in the decades to come. We wanted to make sure that we weren't encumbering future administrations of fire departments, that if they need to add multiple companies to that station, they'll have the ability to do that. So essentially, this station is built for today, but designed for tomorrow. This is a rendering of the station, this isn't everything specific to the station, but this is a general idea. So keeping in mind, and the direction that we had from the fire department to the architects, let's keep it consistent with the neighborhood, which this does really lie in place with the other buildings on Overland Road. It does fit into that neighborhood. And also, it's placed, the particular station, again, what we need today is placed on the property in such a way that we can add to it in the future. We can add another apparatus bay on the right hand of your screen, we can add another apparatus, it's going to be placed on the property, so another one could be added. We can also add on additional living quarters, we can add on a battalion chief's quarters. We have the ability down the road, when those are needed, when they'll likely be needed in this particular area of the city, for those to be added on. Again, that's something we can't do with our existing five stations. So where are we today? We've moved through this programming phase, we've come up with what we needed, and today we are looking through the design development and construction documents. So we came up with the concept, now we refine that concept into our final construction documents, which the architect and designers are working on. We're continually also updating the budget, so we have the overall kind of idea of what the budget's going to be for this. But as we narrow down the scope, we look at the budget and identify cost savings, where we can find those cost savings as we narrow down the scope of the project. Project timeline was another area, we actually had a meeting this morning with all of the team, with ESI, our construction managers, with our architects, with the mayor, and with city staff, to look at, what, what is the current projected timeline, and what can we do to narrow that? I know that's been some concerns to city council, we're addressing those concerns. Where can we find areas to make... Where can we find areas to make this timeline condensed, but still end up with a good project at the end? So that is currently under review and under revision. As we look at that timeline revision, again, as I mentioned, where can we reduce those timelines? What costs are associated with that timeline? And as soon as we kind of work through some of those with our design team, with our construction team, and our internal staff, we will update you next month on those findings coming out of this morning's meeting. I also want to mention project management. The fire department, along with the rest of the team on this particular build, is working collectively with Meridian Public Works Department in the project management area. Stacy Redman, who is here, and Alex Freyteig will be introducing, at the end of this presentation, she is the current city facilities project manager, and she will be the point of contact for the city upon initiation of destruction. Right now, I'm heavily involved in this from the fire department's perspective, to make sure that with the design team, we're getting what we need for a fire department, and with my experience in the fire service, coming up with the design. But as I do have a few other things that I do, once we move into the construction, I can back away a little bit, and then it becomes more project manager centric. We have somebody on the city who is the project manager overseeing the design, any questions from the architects, any questions from our construction manager. I will still be available for any specific things related to the fire service, but once the design's there, I don't think I need to have a whole lot of granular input. This will be more towards somebody that does, specifically for the city, for project management. Stacy has been briefed on the project, I've met with her, I've gone over what the overall back, kind of history of the project is, bringing her all the way up to date to where we are today, budget considerations and integrated her into the team. We are also looking at a commissioning agent that is currently being identified, who, again, will help identify the needs of the city and make sure the city's best interests are being followed as we move forward with this project. So in closing, I do want to point out, and I can't take credit for this, this is the mayor, mentioned this this morning, we truly have assembled the A-team for this project, between our design team, our construction people, the internal staff of the fire department, and other internal city people. We did not bring the B-team to this project. We brought the A-team, and we're addressing all the concerns that you have as City Council on a regular basis, the timeline of this project, the budget of this project, and ultimately the best service that we can provide from a city and from a fire department to the citizens in the long run, not just the next couple of years, but also looking forward to the next 10, 20, 30 years, of what service this station's going to be providing to the city. And we will continue, as Chief mentioned, to update council moving forward on a regular basis as needed. So with that, I would stand for any questions, and also Gunner Gladix, our architect, have any questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
First, thanks for the update. I guess more just some feedback from myself personally. Recognize that I've been, I've been pretty critical and pretty candid about the timing and the delays on this particular project, but I think it's important, at least for you to hear this from me, I don't want you to feel like from council that you've got to rush this project. You need to be timely, we want it done right. This bottom bullet about providing service to our citizens, that should be the most paramount. It should be the number one motivation behind this project. Communicating with us appropriately about timelines, if there are delays, the rationale behind it is appropriate. Providing these monthly updates are very, very welcome and something that I really appreciate. Along those lines, we are very excited about this project, and I see there's public hearing dates, I think, out at that site. Do we have a proposed date for a groundbreaking or anything along those lines that we can start communicating with the public so that they can get excited about this project as well?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, we don't have those dates yet. We still, I believe, September 6th is our conditional use permit, so we still have some city process that we're still continuing to work for, work through until we get that. But I have mentioned to the team that we need to get some gold shuffles ready for when that date comes.
Can I add, just as Councilmember Cavanagh, just as part of the process, we're looking at doing a fast track, so what we would try to do is break some of the work into different chunks and get some of that, those bid packages out early. So that'll take a few things in city process that we'll need to just vet based on this morning's meeting, but the goal would be to try to get that shortened up, get some of the site work, the foundations and that kind of stuff started while we finish up interiors and all that kind of stuff. But that is the process that we're looking at trying to get together right now.
So after this meeting's morning, meetings morning, this morning's meeting, the architect and the construction manager put their heads together. They are trying to put together a more concrete timeline, so that that will be reported next month, and at that time, we should know more about groundbreaking and the process in more detail.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Just to piggyback on what you just said, so we don't have a, I would never hold you to an exact date, but like, any, we don't have a general idea of, like, a timeframe of completion?
You'll have that next month. Mr. Palmer.
Do we think groundbreaking will happen in calendar year 2018?
Yes.
Sweet.
I spoke ahead of the timeline, but I could say yes. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, and thank you for your commitment for monthly updates. I know that we would love to have Alex come up here, introduce Stacy. We appreciate Alex and Stacy stepping in here, joining part of, joining the team and being an integral part of the handoff that Charlie mentioned, once the fire service design piece is done, it really then transfers, not the ownership of it, but some of the involvement of it. Alex.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity. It's a very pleasant process to introduce a new team member, so Stacy Redman, Stacy, raise your hand there, you know, we'll make you stand up, is our new facilities project manager. She's been with us for about six weeks now. Stacy comes to us from the private sector, and she's got about 16 years of project management experience. That includes well over 100 completed projects, everything from small tenant improvement kind of projects to large 20,000 square foot commercial projects. So we are extremely excited to have this kind of talent come to the team. As Fire and the mayor have just indicated, you know, she'll be a resource for the Fire Station Six project, and of course, we look forward to future projects that she's going to be taking the reins on here for the city as we go forward. She's already immersing herself in learning city processes and procedures. In fact, I would say she's drinking through a fire hose, if that analogy is appropriate. So, so again, just an opportunity to kind of introduce her and wanted to let you know, kind of put a face to a name, which is always nice, so.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, Alex. I will tell you that there's a commitment from all of the various departments that are going to be touching this in some way or another, and this is going to be an important one. So thank you, Stacy, for joining the team, and I hope you don't regret it.
She won't. Madam Mayor, I just wanted to come and wrap this up as well, to be the face of this, to ask if there's any questions, number one. Number two, to thank Charlie and Gunner and the work on the city staff. They are working every day on this, this is a big priority, and so I want to assure you from my level, there's a lot of work going on on this, to the point of moving dirt, I've thought about taking my own tractor out there and just starting to move dirt to get something going, literally. So with that, I want to close it up and ask if there's, I know that's not allowed, Bill. So you get a little panicked there, to ask if there's any questions prior to next month's update.
Any questions from council?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item 10A is ordinance 18-1774A. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18-1774A. An amended ordinance, file H2018-0006 FAST Eddies, for annexation of a parcel of land being a portion of Lot 2, Block 1 of Jasmine Acres subdivision, Book 59 of Platts, at pages 5,829 through 5,830, records of Ada County, Idaho, and a portion of unplatted lands situated in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 32, and the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 33, township 4 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. As described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 1.862 acres of land from RUT to CG, General Retail and Service Commercial Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. If there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve ordinance number 18-1774A with suspension rules.
Second. Motion, second, to approve item 10A. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylan.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Any items under 11? Just a reminder that there's the last Cable One movie night on Friday. We, Brenda announced the ICOM ribbon cutting at 5:00. I have it at 4:30. It's on Facebook at 5:15. So we will get you the real date and time. It's probably Brenda's, but we'll get that out to you just as a reminder. Art Week is next week, and the art sip is on Thursday, September 6th, at 6 o'clock at something special. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.